Waiting circumstances. Total of ten minutes is provided at this time, which where input can be given regarding agenda items. Individual speakers would be limited to two minutes each. Do we have any early speakers?
No, I have no cards for that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any person who would like to address the commission on any agendized item is requested to complete a speaker's card for the recording secretary and identify the item which you would like to discuss. Each person will be given an opportunity to address the commission at the time such item is discussed by the commission. Speaker cards are available at the rear of the chamber as well as here at the front, your right on the table. Individual speakers will then be limited to three minutes each. And Mr. Torassiano is joining us, so we now have everyone here. The first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of August I did note on page eight of the minutes, I think it was, let's see, it would be the middle of the page where it begins, Commissioner Wheeler stated, should be Commissioner Torassiano. It's the only thing I saw in the minutes that... Did you see anything else? Anyone see anything else in the minutes? Okay. I know Mr. Wheeler wants to buy a motorcycle, but he's waiting.
Hope he doesn't slip past you.
All right. So could we have a motion then, please, on the approval of minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from last session.
Second that. All right. So it's moved and seconded to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. The next item is continued public hearing on conditional use permit number 0817. So without objection, the public hearing is open on this matter, and we have before us a recommendation to continue this conditional use permit indefinitely. Mr. Ludiki, would you care to comment on that?
Just very briefly, Mr. Chairman, we did receive, as you can see in your packet, another letter from this applicant requesting a continuance. Given the history now of continuances on this item, the staff doesn't have an objection to the continuance. We would just simply recommend that it be continued indefinitely, and that the applicant win, and if they are ready to place this back on a future agenda, that we go through the renoticing process, because I think it's been a sufficient length of time that anyone who might be interested in it, this item, you know, may be losing track of continuances on it. So just with that provision, we would recommend that you grant that continuance, and if we see the case again, we'll go through the renoticing procedure on it.
All right, thank you. Any questions from anyone on this matter? All right then. And we have any speakers on this matter?
I have no speakers on this, Mr. Chairman.
All right then. So without objection, the public hearing is closed, and we'll consider a motion on the recommendation, please.
I make a motion that we continue conditional use permit number 08-17 indefinitely.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Next item or items are new public hearings. The first is conditional use permit 0902. So without objection, the public hearing is open on this matter, and we have received, for the record, a letter from the applicant indicating they agree to all the conditions as proposed, although I have some questions on this, so maybe we could have a brief staff
Chairman votes, members of the commission. This is a request to construct an addition of almost 4,900 square feet to an existing church in the R-7,000 zone. It's located on Seventh Street East, approximately 150 feet north of Avenue K-8. You may remember that the same congregation recently received approval for a conditional use permit in an industrial area nearby to this that is kind of serving as an interim location for their worship services. In going through this particular case, staff reviewed the parking. That's probably the one thing that I would note for you. We have recommended within the staff report that you provide a reduction in the normal required amount of parking. This is based, not in small part, on the current size of the congregation and the amount of parking that we assume that it will use. We have also, as a result of discussion at the planning commission study session a week ago, recommended to you two additional conditions that are included, requiring that roof access to the building be from inside the building, and that any kind of electrical gear be located in some kind of enclosure incorporated into the building itself. We feel that, given the design of the project and the fact that there has been a church operating at this location for a number of years, that it's not going to create any undue hardship on the surrounding area. We did note for you also in the staff report that at this point, the church is uncertain as to when they would begin construction, but under the conditional use permit provisions, when you include allowed extensions, they would have a possible maximum period of five years to do that. So with those particular provisions, we have recommended approval to you of this request in accordance with the conditions as listed.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Ludiki, before we hear from any speakers, if we have any?
I have no speaker's cards, Mr. Chairman, but I believe there may be representatives of the applicant present.
All right. Does anyone have any questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, in the pre-meeting, we talked about elevations of the addition. Has that been reviewed and added as a condition?
Say again, I'm sorry. Say again.
We were discussing the elevations of the addition.
Mm-hmm.
I just wanted to know if that has been added as a condition of the conditional use permit.
The two conditions that we added, one was the incorporation of any electrical gear into the building itself, which was one issue raised. The other was taking roof access off of the exterior of the building, incorporating it into the interior of the building as part of the design. Those were the two added conditions that we have on the case.
The couple of questions I had, which I think you've really answered, the parking calculations are based on so-called fixed seats in the sanctuary.
Correct.
Not really fixed, but the way they've laid it out.
Correct.
And that's how you calculate it, and then took a 10% reduction to accommodate...
Yeah, a maximum of 10% is what we, the flexibility that we allow in the code. So beyond that, we don't really have that kind of approach, but...
So if the entire complex was being used, like most churches that have conditional use permits, the parking is calculated on the largest and the most number of seats.
Yes, largest assembly area.
The potential risk of impact of parking, the rare occasion when all the facilities are being used at the same time, you may have a parking impact, but it's probably very rare.
Yeah, but the majority of the time, we feel that it would not. But yes, there could be those occasions, special services, events of some kind that where you...
That's not unusual. I mean, and quite a number of congregations throughout the community have those same potential impacts. I mean, that's... If we require, if we required, you know, 100% parking impacts developed on the site, these sites would be, you know, like some of our shopping centers that have way too much parking, and they sit that way 363 days out of the year, and maybe two days out of the year they get impacted, so...
Correct.
Okay. It's a matter of equity, really. I had a question about Fair Glenn Street to the west. I'm assuming that's a street. It looks like a dirt alley that backs up to the west side of this property, and I noticed there's a 32-foot, I'm assuming easement dedication. I don't know what it is, but it's not, there's no proposal to improve that?
At this time, we're asking for the dedication because Fair Glenn's been identified as a future street, but there's only portions of it that have been dedicated, and there are just a couple of homes that actually take access to it. Didn't require them to improve it and would not unless they propose to take access to the backside of their property to Fair Glenn.
So under this design and CUP, there would be no ability to take access, although it looks like they had a curb cut there?
That's actually just a backup area. There would be a wall. There's no curb cut.
Okay.
It won't be open to that eastern area.
Okay. All right. And the, on the site plan, it looks to me like they're going to end up abandoning one of the curb cuts on Seventh to the north of the site and utilizing either the existing one or making curb gutter and sidewalk improvements to accommodate their site plan, since they have two curb cuts there now, so they'll, in effect, have only one, wondering if they build this out.
Yes, I think it would actually be a relocation of the existing driveway, because there is one kind of centered right now in the middle of the site that accesses the parking area, but under the revision, they would essentially relocate that. You still only have one access, though.
Yeah, there's one to the north, kind of a few feet south of the property line, maybe 50 feet south of the property line, and then there's another one further south of that. There's actually two. I notice your condition, you talk about putting in evergreen trees along the property lines and so forth, you know, and masonry walls and that sort of stuff. So, I mean, this is a substantial improvement to the existing facility and to the neighborhood. I mean, it's a... That's for sure. Okay. All right then. And the applicant understands all the conditions, and they've agreed to everything according to their letter, so...
Yes, then, and in talking with the planner today, that also includes the conditions that were added as a result of the study session.
All right, very good. Okay. That's all I have. Are there, are there any speakers on this? Anyone wishing to address the commission on this? You're certainly welcome to. Anyone? Yeah, Mr. Hall, you have a question?
It says that the applicant's limited to following hours, and then it says required to contact planning department should they wish to modify their hours. Would that be like a change that would be permanent once they ask for it, or could they ask for like a, or permit the city would issue? Because, you know, a church is kind of like fundraising and things like that, is...
Yes. It actually would handle it in a couple of ways. If they had some kind of special event and they were concerned about the hours, they could contact us at a staff level and say, is it okay to have this at this particular time? But it would also apply if they were to decide, for example, that they need it until 10 o'clock on a Sunday on a more regular basis. That's not a significant change, really, in their hours, and I think at a staff level, we'd be comfortable with that. However, if they were to come back and say, we'd like to be operating till 3:00 in the morning, I think that's something where staff would say, we really don't have the authority to approve that under the, you know, intent of the CUP, and that would have to come back before the commission. But this does provide a way for them to deal with small changes, if there's a change in the way they operate, or if there's some kind of special event.
And with the large improvement to the property, there's going to be runoff from rain and whatnot. Is any of that going to get on the dirt road, or will it be funneled to...
It would be designed to go out to Seventh Street, not out to Fair Glenn.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. So no one wishing to speak on this matter? All right. Be appropriate then to close the public hearing without objection and consider a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 1040 approving the conditional use permit number 09-02.
I second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right then.
Motion passes seven zero.
All right, thank you. Thank you. The next item, item number four, is a new public hearing on conditional use permit 1019. So without objection, the public hearing is open on this matter, and we have, for the record, we have received a letter of, from the applicant acknowledging all the conditions of approval and agreeing to them. Does anyone have any questions on this matter? Do you want to hear a staff report? Apparently not then. So the public hearing is open. Do we have any speakers on this matter?
I have no cards, Mr. Chairman, but I believe an applicant is in the audience if you have any questions.
If you care to address the commission, you're certainly welcome to, but you're not obliged to. All right. All right then. So without objection, the public hearing is closed, and we'll consider a motion on this matter.
I'd like to move to adopt resolution number 10-41 approving conditional use permit number 10-19.
Thank you. Second that. Thank you. Okay. Any further questions or comments? Been moved and seconded.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. The next item is a public hearing on tentative tract or parcel map 66794. So without objection, the public hearing is open, and the recommendation is to continue this matter. So we'd leave the public hearing open and continue it? So that would be the motion. If someone would care to make that?
I move that we continue tentative parcel map number 66794 to the October 18, 2010 planning commission meeting.
Thank you.
I second it.
Thank you. All right. Any further questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven zero, and this will be placed on the October planning commission meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Ludiki. Director's announcements?
Yes, one announcement, both for the commission and members of the public. The city is at the beginning of its master plan of trails effort, and the first public meeting for that planning effort will take place a week from Thursday. That will be Thursday, September 30, from 6:30 to 8:30 at the City Hall Emergency Operations Center. That is accessed from the north parking lot, and that will be the first opportunity for members of the public to give their input and comments and ideas on what should be addressed in the master plan of trails and things that they think are important to cover in that. So I would invite, obviously, you as individual members of the commission or any members of the public to please attend that, particularly if you have an interest in equestrian biking, walking, or, like me, walking your dog safely, so...
All right. Very good. Thank you, sir.
Well, they put out an email, Brian, regarding that meeting?
We actually have started doing that. There was a story in the Valley Press today, bottom of the first page, unfortunately, but it was on the first page. We are also preparing to do publicity via the city's email contact lists and the e-news process that we use, as well as press releases. And our partners in this effort, the Animal Valley Partners for Health, are also doing outreach and effort in association with it. So we hope to get good attendance and good attendance from a wide variety of people who have interests in this topic.
Yeah, it's an exciting project, and what building is that going to be held in?
It will be in the Emergency Operations Center here at Lancaster City Hall, 6:30 to 8:30 on Thursday evening, September 30. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. On our agenda, we have to consider a potential change of meeting dates for the January 17 and the February 21 regularly scheduled planning commission meetings, because they conflict with two federal holidays. And we'd be, we could show up, but the building would be locked and staff would be gone, so maybe we need to reconsider. What's your recommendation, Mr. Ludiki? That we move it one day, or does that conflict with the city council's schedule?
The one in February is actually a little more problematic, because I believe that the 22nd is a normal council meeting date, but let me verify that.
So rather than, so if we, if we move the January 17th to the 18th, which would be a Tuesday evening as opposed to a Monday evening, that would not conflict with...
No, that should be the third Tuesday, which would be okay, and council meetings are on the 2nd and 4th, but I think the 22nd of February is a fourth Tuesday, if I'm not mistaken.
All right.
So for that one, in the past, when the commission's had these issues, it's approached this a couple of different ways. We have, in some cases, put it back a week to what would be...
The 10th?
Yeah, February, dah 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 dah, 14th. I'm not sure you want to be here on Valentine's Day, but, you know, 14th or the 15th might be available. The other thing you could do is push it ahead one week or further out one week and put it on the 28th of February. That's also been done in the past by the commission, so... Or I suppose you could put it on Wednesday, if in fact the council chambers are available Wednesday.
Well, so what is your, are you going to give us a recommendation, or you're just going to let us pick?
Well, you know, I have my own preferences, but this, to some extent, is dependent, obviously, on the commission's availability. I personally, I have found that trying to keep meetings on Mondays probably works better for the commission as a whole, so I would say probably the 28th of February if I had to make a choice myself.
So the 24th of January and 28th of February, is what you're suggesting?
Those would be my suggestions. I'm not so sure that the Tuesday in January is a bad time, but it, once again, depends on the availability of the individual commissioners.
But it does impact future staff work relative to successive agendas...
Yes.
Lead time...
Yes.
And all that other stuff, too.
But if we have enough lead time, we can deal with that.
But I'm talking, for instance, if you move February forward to the 28th, you know, the March meeting is then likely to be rather brief, because you've cut your prep time by a week.
True. But if we, but if we know in advance that schedule, we can adjust to that.
Okay. So what's your, what's your, we'll take a straw poll here. Dan has straw. I know he does, because he's carrying it around in your pocket, don't you, from the So what do you want to do, guys?
How about a suggestion?
Yeah. So move it ahead one week? Is that, is that, everybody comfortable with that? Just bump it all ahead one week?
Yes.
No?
Works.
January 24th?
We'll try that.
We'll try that? Make it January 24th instead of the 17th, and February 28th instead of the 21st? Okay?
Perfect.
Okay.
So you'll have a real light meeting in March, Dan?
Quite possibly. We will, we will verify that the, if that's the desire of the commission, we'll verify that those, that those are open dates on the council chamber calendar.
Okay. So you'll let us know if this...
We'll let you know tomorrow, if it works.
If this doesn't work, or does work, or whatever. One way or another, you'll let us know.
We will let you know.
Okay, good. All right, very good. Any other matters to come before the commission? Anyone? All right. So now is the time for public business from the floor on non-agendized items. This portion of the agenda allows an individual the opportunity to address the commission on any subject regarding city business. Under state legislation, no action can be taken on non-agendized items. Members of the public should be aware of this when addressing the commission regarding items not specifically referenced on the agenda. items not specifically referenced on the agenda, and we ask you to please complete a speaker's card for the recording secretary. Individual speakers are allowed three minutes. Do we have any speakers on non-agendized items?
I have no cards, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Anyone wishing to speak? No? Okay. Therefore, we stand adjourned until Monday, October 11th, at 5:30 p.m. in the Planning Large Conference Room here at City Hall. Thank you very much.
Thank you.